It's. Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the Borough Council Workshop meeting for December third. We'll go ahead and start our roll call.
President Burge.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss. Mayor Gerard. Junior Councilperson. Shiana B. Polo. From Mattress Snyder. First, let's hear how first.
Oh, was our junior councilperson on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought I heard him, so.
All right, it might be a little delayed. Thanks, everybody for being so understanding. I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. So we'll go ahead and get started. So can I get approval or can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the December third, twenty twenty five meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Mushroom Councilman Burns, second to councilwoman Weiss. Any questions, changes, or amendments? All in favor?
Not.
Opposed? There are none. All right, item two, public input. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak, or if they're online and would like to speak, or if Diane would like to speak. Of. I won't go into the rest because I don't think there is anybody. So we'll go on to item three announcements.
Next council meeting is December seventeenth, regular meeting at seven P. M. In council chambers. The next planning commission is scheduled for Monday, December fifteenth at six P. M. In council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, December seventeenth at eight A. M. In council chambers. The borough offices will be closed on Wednesday, December twenty fourth, Thursday, December twenty fifth, and Friday, December twenty sixth, in observance of the Christmas holidays. The borough offices will be closed on Wednesday, December thirty first, and Thursday, Jan. God bless you. Thursday, January first, twenty twenty six, in observance of the New Year's Eve and New Year's Day holidays. Hatfield Borough Offices will be closed on Wednesday, December seventeenth, from twelve to one thirty for employee training. A public hearing for ordinance number five sixty, amending chapter ten Code of Ordinances, weeds and other vegetation, to regulate bamboo, is scheduled for December seventeenth at seven P. M. And a conditional use hearing for five South Maple Avenue is scheduled for December seventeen at seven P. M.
Any questions? Having them, we'll go on to our reports and standing committees. We'll start with budget labor and finance. We did just a few minutes or have a quick talk this evening regarding the budget, which we will have some time later again to discuss. And if there are no changes, or excuse me, the plan will be after that is to go ahead and put it out for advertising to make the final decision on the next meeting on the seventeenth. So other than that, that's what we talked about. Any questions? All right, if there aren't any, we'll go on to planning, building, and zoning.
We didn't meet since the last last month.
All right. Madam Councilman, public safety?
We didn't meet, so there's nothing new to report.
All right. Public Works?
We also had not met, so we do not have a court chair.
All right. Vice President Gerard, utilities?
We have not met recently, so I have nothing to report.
How about Hurrock?
Same thing. We have not met recently and nothing reported this time.
All right, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. I have nothing to report.
All right. That was quick. Any questions? On nothing to report? All right, we'll go on to our item five, reports and correspondence. We'll start with the monthly investment.
Monthly investment report was included in your packets. I'll highlight a total income and disbursements year to date. So we have a gain of eighty seven thousand, seven eighteen. And our total disbursements were ninety six, seven, eighty. All accounts seem to be, you know, gaining money, some significantly higher than others. So as always, council, budget, finance, and labor does discuss the investments, and we'll continue to look at these moving forward.
Any questions? All right, how about an update on our monthly on EIT and LST?
EIT year to date is five forty one, ninety nine, and twenty twenty four was five nineteen, nine eighty three. Just want to highlight that in the twenty twenty six budget is proposed that we upped EIT from five twenty five to five fifty. So the five forty one seems fairly close to the estimated five fifty that we want to budget for twenty twenty six. So that's why we bumped that up twenty five thousand, and LST year to date is fifty thousand, three eighty five. In twenty twenty four, it was sixty one, six fifty five. In the twenty twenty six budget, we have an estimated fifty five thousand dollars. So fifty thousand is, you know, a little bit shy of that, so we'll see what December brings in for us.
All right, any questions? All right, how about monthly year to date?
That report will be at the next meeting.
All right, monthly zoning and hearing?
There were no new zoning hearing board applications.
All right, I will turn it over to Councilman Burns for the Hatfield two fifty committee report.
Thank you. A couple of things. I want to remind everybody that there's there's three sites that you can get information available. There is the Hatfield two fifty website, which is actually on the Hatfield Township website. So if you go there, you can get a link that'll go there. Also, there is a Hatfield two fifty Facebook page. You just go to Facebook, put in Hatfield two fifty, and it'll bring it up. And there's also an Instagram account as well. There's some good things on that Instagram account. Link to daily activities that they're doing. Like, it's listed as on this day. So what that means is back in seventeen seventy six, what happened then? So that's really interesting. Couple of upcoming events. January twelfth is the next Declaration of Independence Discussion Panel. That will be held at the Township Building at seven o'clock on January twelfth. The topic is what did the declaration mean in seventeen seventy six, and what does it mean today? The really interesting thing about this discussion panel is the panel will be will be composed of high school students from Cavalry Baptist, Dick Mennonite, Lansdale Catholic, and North Penn High School. So it might be really interesting to to get their take on this. Once again, it's at the Township Building, and it'll start at seven o'clock. On December sixth is the Morgan Log House Candlelight Tour. So just a reminder, we talked about that last last month. On January eighth, the tickets will be going on sale for the Jefferson Dinner at the Rising Sun Inn. They are a first come, first served basis. They are sixty five dollars apiece, includes the dinner and the the event itself. That should do it for now. Any questions?
Madam Manager, do we have links on our site that connect in with the Hatfield Township?
Yes, we have like a two fifty section that you click there, takes you to like the Hatfield Township page and that portion of two fifty. Yeah.
I apologize, I think I've asked that question before, so.
I don't remember.
Okay, good. All right. All right, any questions? For Councilman Burns? If not, I can can I assume from the packet that we don't have Police Department, Fire Department, or EMS reports?
There is a fire department report. Police will be next meeting.
Yes, I haven't actually gone today yet.
Okay, yeah, next meeting.
Okay.
The fire department came in today.
Okay.
Forty three calls in the month. Four seventy six, so. Never posted five hundred. The year, so then our new squad is fully in service now. From new calls.
What what percentage is that above where we're normally at? Do we know?
I'm not sure. Okay, I didn't look at that. At the new weekend.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right.
On J D, our phone number is no longer valid.
Like your landline?
Yeah, we have a problem where when we switch over credit cards, we Hatfield number got transferred over, so we stopped paying it, so they gave the phone number to somebody else, so. So it's no longer valid. We'll process trying to give us a new number, and once I get that, like, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, the current number now goes to some kind of contest site.
Was it eight by five number?
Yes.
Those numbers are so hard to combine.
Remember when the numbers used to be just eight hundred? That was it?
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
Didn't have to do the area code before.
All right, any questions? If not, I believe the next one is the Public Works Report.
I had a whole lot to report. Got all the decorations up, everything's plugged in. I think everything looks pretty good.
Good job.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Questions?
Out of curiosity, what's the current ETA now? So you're working on the crossing pole and everything there outside the time pole?
It's it's coming along good. They're waiting for all the the masked arms, the the steel, you know, stuff to be delivered.
All right, any questions? All right, if not, let's go to sorry, engineering?
Trash report was included in your packets. I'll highlight for Bennett's Court, additional asphalt plans and stormwater calculations were received on November eighteen, and they issued comments on November twenty sixth. For Hatfield Walk, storm and sanitary material submittals were received and reviewed in November, and the buildings are currently being constructed. I know that Gus was on site today doing some inspections for them for their sanitary, so that's moving along. Forty three Roosevelt, the new lateral for unit four was connected, and stormwater asphalt plans have been received, and they were approved on November twenty sixth, and then they're continuing to review developers' escrow requests. And West School Street, an application was received in the Office of the Engineer, November eighteenth, and it's currently under review for a road opening permit for West School Street. So if we get the review back, you possibly could see that on as a discussion item in December. If not, then that would be a discussion item at the beginning of the year in January. So it just depends if we get our engineering and legal reviews back. It might be on for discussion at the next meeting. If not, then it will be on in January, and it's twenty three, West School Street has two vacant properties, if you're aware, on the sides. They're looking to connect utilities to those. And right now, there's a moratorium on that road. So they put in an application for Borough Council to waive that moratorium, along with some other things like putting some money up and some escrow, so you'll see that.
Any questions? All right. Bless you. Zoning Officer Report?
There was no report in the packet.
Fire Marshal?
There was no report in the packet.
All right, Pool Advisor? I know there was that.
Pool Advisor report was in the packet. She gave an update, a facility update, spoke just about how the season happened, and there's an update from Scott and Mike Pruson. They also talked about the budget discussion and the loss into the general fund, which a lot of times pools don't make the money, you know, during the year that it's it's not uncommon. So they discussed that. They discussed maybe how they could change some things for next year to minimize those losses, and talked about their sending out their survey and their text message system. I personally never saw the survey, so I was going to ask about that to see maybe if our residents got that who were members, you know, so because I didn't see any survey, and I know my family went to the pool several times this year. So I'm going to check on that because I think our residents would probably like to participate in that.
All right. Any questions? All right, Junior Councilperson Report?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I only have one report tonight. It's a it's actually a really fun report. So my as part of being a junior councilperson, I get to do a project. And this year, my project's going to be a winter food drive. So the the days you can bring things to the Borough Office are December sixth, which is the Saturday from nine to eleven, and then December ninth and tenth from twelve to two. And some things you could bring just household cleaning supplies, any nonperishables, flour, sugar, coffee, cereal, and cake mix. And if you can't make it to any of those specific times, feel free to drop it off at the Borough Office between December eighth and December twelfth.
And this will get posted on social media?
Yes.
It should be posted already.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it is already.
Well, I requested that the township posted, as well as Hatfield Church of the Brether, they posted. Because there's a very.
Yeah, okay, great.
All right, any questions for Junior Councilperson? If not, we'll go on to item six, our managers' report?
My report was included in their in your packets. Nothing new from the last meeting that we had, except some you know, escrow releases that you approved or construction that I had that was highlighted in Chad's update. So if there's any general questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain them, but nothing really new that sticks out on my report this month. Oh, just kidding. I will highlight that Casey's was sold. If you haven't seen, I wanted to put that in here. So Casey's was sold. I'm not sure what the name is going to be, but a gentleman and his partner came in and they purchased it, and they're going to have some type of restaurant in there. It will not be alcohol, but breakfast, lunch, I'm not sure the hours, kind of talking about if you picture like cooking in front of you, his idea is like kind of like hibachi, but not, but with, you know, eggs and pancakes, but it's prepared in front of you where Casey's Bar used to be. They want to open it up and bring a lot more lighting. If you've seen like the front of the building kind of changed to put like big windows. I think they want type of French doors when you walk in, so they're working with like ABA compliance and Bob. So no liquor license, but they will, you know, hoping to get open, you know, slightly after the beginning of the year. They do have a lot of, you know, small. It seems like a lot of renovations, but they're not big. They're not structural. There's not those things, just trying to, you know, make it brighter, inviting. And I'll let you know when I hear about the name and or the hours.
Is it just breakfast, or is it?
I believe it was going to be like a breakfast and a lunch. I'm not, that's what when Steve and I had met with him and Bob, kind of really focused on breakfast and like cooking this big breakfast in front of you at kind of like a hibachi where the bar was. So he didn't really kind of highlight the specific hours. So made me think of maybe like a breakfast and a later lunch type of place, but when I know I'll confirm, sure hope, being tomorrow, he tries to come in every Tuesday and Thursday just to talk with Bob because he just wants to be do the right thing, open, transparent, work with the borough, you know, they're very good communicators, you know, they've been a pleasure to work with thus far.
Are they local people?
Lansdale.
Oh, okay, good.
And I believe he is a like, not retired chef, but he is like a professional chef is what he used to do, and him, they just wanted to buy their own place.
Yes.
Any questions? All right, having done, we'll go on to item seven, our new business discussion items. So with item A, the twenty twenty six proposed budget discussion, advertising, and resolution.
The twenty twenty six proposed budget is in your packets. It's the same budget that we spoke about at the last meeting that has no tax increase and no rate increases. It does contain a small increase to the customer service charge for both electric and sewer. Included in your packets is the advertisement of the availability of the proposed budget, which is on for consideration as an action item this evening, along with a sample of the resolution that will be on for consideration at the December seventeenth meeting that will authorize appropriating specific funds for twenty twenty six.
All right, any questions? All right, having done, we'll go to item B, resolution number resolution, excuse me, resolution no change to the real estate tax rate for twenty twenty six.
This resolution just states that the fixing the real estate tax rate for the fiscal year of twenty twenty six for four mills for Hatfield Borough, point two five mills for a fire apparatus, fire hose, and the firehouse, standing at four point two five mills, which is the same millage for twenty twenty five. This will be on for consideration as an action item at the December seventeenth meeting.
All right, questions? All right, item C, resolution residential and GLP one flat rate fee?
This is the resolution authorizing the increase of the customer service charge from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars for residential customers and GLP one customers. That would bring the borough an additional fifty three thousand dollars of revenue for next year and cost the average customer thirty six dollars a year. This will be on for consideration as an action item at the December seventeenth regular meeting.
All right, questions? All right, item E, the expiring terms for the Planning Commission, zoning hearing board, Hurrock, and Pool Advisor. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, D. Sorry, I crossed that out. We'll go back to res to item D, the resolution for the Santeri Sewer Quarterly EDU Flat Rate.
This is the resolution to change the quarterly EDU flat rate from fifty dollars to fifty five dollars a quarter, which brings the borough thirty six thousand dollars of revenue in twenty twenty six and costs the average customer twenty dollars a year based on one EDU. So if a business has more than one EDU, it's that amount times the amount of EDUs that you have, and it will be on for consideration as an action item at the December seventeenth regular meeting.
All right, any questions? If not, we'll go to item F, resolution twenty twenty five? I'm just want to see if you guys would catch that. So item E, the expiring terms for the Planning Commission, zoning hearing board, Hurrock, and Pool Advisory.
These are the expiring terms for those committees or boards. They will be appointed at the reorganization meeting in January. My question was, what we normally do is reach out to those people that are currently serving, see if they would still like to serve. If they would, then we would, council would consider them for next year. If they wouldn't, then we would make an advertisement saying we're seeking, you know, X, Y, and Z. Is that how we'd like to do it this year? It's up to council. Just let me know how you'd like to proceed, and then I, so I just have some time to get things together.
I guess my thought would be is is to put it out to the community as well and see would they be, would anyone be interested, along with the folks who are already on it, and then see what feedback we get.
What whatever it's all like.
Is it good then?
Yeah.
I will put an announcement to just let you know that if you're seeking interest, let me know kind of by, I need to know more by the next council meeting because if there is interest from other people that are outside of the candidates that currently hold those seats, you might want to talk to those candidates and see their interest before council would decide to appoint them in twenty twenty six. So they might not be appointed exactly at the reorg meeting, you know, you know, we'll have to see how that works out, but I'll let you know at the next meeting the interest, and it'll be a discussion item, just so we see where we fall.
You might want to let the.
Except Hurrock, because Hurrock is Vice President Gerard and Mayor Gerard are automatically appointed to that committee by whoever the council, like council president would appoint those. So it would only be Mr. Amrosi.
Right, yeah, right.
You might want to let the committee chairman for each of those other two know what we're doing, just so that.
Zoning hearing.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Rudolph and then and Mr. Farrell.
Yeah.
Just say, hey, these two are up, but we're we're asking them, but we're also asking if the public is interested.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. And for those who are listening, and and I was just part of this, we're not saying that anyone who's on there today or these folks were not interested in rejoining, we're just saying let's be transparent and give opportunities for anyone who might be interested, so.
I'll get that out tomorrow. I'll put some type of flyer or something.
Great. All right, item F, resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen honoring the the twenty twenty five Lawrence G. Stevens Distinguished Service Award recipient.
This resolution is recognizing Joseph G. Dice as the recipient of the Lawrence G. Stevens Distinguished Service Award for twenty twenty five, and it is on for consideration as an action item this evening.
Any questions? If not, we'll go to item G, resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, recognizing James Baskins' ten years of service to the borough.
This is the resolution recognizing James Baskins' ten years of service to Hatfield Borough in the Public Works Department as on for consideration as an action item this evening.
Any questions? Having done, we'll go to item H, resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, recognizing Lindsay Hellerman's ten years of service to the borough.
This resolution recognizes Lindsay Hellman's ten years of service to Hatfield Borough as the Public Information Officer, Right to Know Officer, and everything else under the sun. I would say everything but the kitchen sink is like one of them. Yeah, it's on for an action item this evening, and I believe both, well, both Lindsay and James will be available on Friday for the present.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. Any questions? All right, if not, we'll go to I, resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen, recognizing thirty five years of service for Edward Polanski's to the borough. Did I get the last name right?
Polanowski.
Polanowski. I get that wrong every time, so.
This is a resolution recognizing Ed Polanowski's thirty five years of service to Hatfield Borough and is on for consideration as an action item this evening.
All right, any questions? All right, if not, we'll go to item eight, old business, starting with item eight, ordinance number five sixty, amending chapter ten Code of Ordinances, weeds and other vegetation to to regulate bamboo.
Ordinance number five sixty is going to hold a public meeting on Wednesday, December seventeenth at seven P. M. At the Hatfield Borough Municipal Building to consider ordinance five sixty, chapter ten, needs another vegetation and add new section dealing with bamboo and repealing prior inconsistent ordinances. I know we've talked about this at two meetings now. If you have it, you have to contain it. You can't plant it if you don't already have it. That's the basic gist of it that the committee kind of worked on, and it proposed to council, so that's what the public hearing will be on on December seventeen.
All right, any questions? All right, item B, conditional use hearing for five South Maple Avenue?
There's a conditional use hearing scheduled for December seventeenth for five South Maple Avenue for approval to construct a one thousand, one hundred and forty four foot square foot garage as an accessory unit in the R three residential commercial zoning district, where you can have no more than seven hundred square feet in in accessory use. And we are still currently waiting for some information, and we talked at the last meeting to see if we could maybe get a survey so we could better see the plans or those things that should be presented prior to the next meeting. So I will get with the code department tomorrow and make sure that he gets that information so you can consider this at the conditional use hearing on the seventeenth. I know we wanted to look at a survey or possibly how this looked on like a plot plan, like, you know, pervious versus impervious coverage, those type of things. Get a just a better understanding of where his line, you know, parcel numbers were and things like that.
Just wanted to affirm that, I'm sorry. I see here that we have the notice that's in the packet, or are you posting this on the property, or are we sending out?
I think Bob, this is when we put in the newspaper, and then Bob Bob will post the property probably tomorrow, because I think it has to be seven days prior. Yes. So Bob will do it tomorrow. Yeah, and I sometimes for conditional use, sometimes it's like zoning, he'll send letters, sometimes I have to check with that, yeah, but he will post the property.
He notifies the neighbors, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, like the letters for everybody in the four hundred square feet, yeah.
I think we had neighbors here last meeting. I think we had neighbors here last meeting. It was Larry Young's wife, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for the last one. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Then no questions, we'll go to item C, twenty twenty-six meeting date advertisement.
The proposed twenty twenty-six meeting dates are in your council packets and they're on for consideration to advertise this evening. I did send them to the Planning Commission Chair. Um, I'm not so sure if the Planning Commission is going to meet in December, so um, I sent them to the chair. So he can, you know, look at them and then we'll send them to the committee and they'll probably approve, you know, two of them are on here, uh, that, that they work for them. So we won't advertise it officially in the newspaper until the Planning Commission gives their blessing. And I believe Hurok has already looked at these um, with the chairman and approved them.
And how many days notice do we have to provide for advertising before we vote on for these, for the dates?
Um, you'll just vote to advertise and you really only need twenty-four hours for a meeting.
Okay, that's what I was scared of.
The end of December if we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Special highlight, the January fifth is at six PM because that's the reorganization meeting. Um, I believe we're going to do some type of refreshments if you want to invite your families, you know, five to six downstairs. I, I told Representative Malagary about it when I met with him on Monday. So we will um, you know, try to be inviting for families and stuff if they want to come, you know, and meet and greet new council members um, before the reorg meeting.
Okay. Sounds great. All right. Any questions? All right, we'll get to the action portion of our meeting and we'll start with the item A, motion to consider advertising at twenty twenty-six meeting dates.
Thank you, motion.
Second.
Thank you, motion from Councilman Burns, a second from Councilwoman Weiss. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item B, motion to consider advertising the availability of the Borough Hatfield Budget Appropriating Specific Funds for twenty twenty-six.
So move. Second.
Thank you, motion from Councilman Gerard, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item C, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen honoring the twenty twenty-five Lawrence G. Stevens Distinguished Service Award recipient.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item D, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, recognizing James Baskin for his ten years of service to the Hatfield Borough.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Fagan, a second from Councilwoman Weiss. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item E, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, recognizing Lindsay Hellman for her ten years of service to Hatfield Borough.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item F, motion to consider resolution twenty foot, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, recognizing Edward Polanowski? Did I get that correct that time? For his thirty-five years of service to the borough.
So move. Second.
I got motion from Councilman Fagan, a second from Councilman Burns. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. We will have a um, executive session to talk through some real estate and other issues. So can I get a motion to adjourn for the executive session?
Okay.
All right, I got a motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
Thanks.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.